Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, May 21st, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with council members Cooper and Vanderpool excused this evening. And with that, I'd like to call City Manager Bernie forward for an announcement this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Members of the council, for the record, Jay Bernie, City Manager. Kind of a special item for you tonight. We have a new county manager, as you know, and he's been on the job for a few months, and I thought it'd be great to bring him here and introduce him to all of you, and so he gets a chance to meet all of you, and you can learn a bit about him, he can learn a bit about you. So, without further ado, please help me welcome Leonard Hernandez, the new county manager. And I'm gonna give you this, too. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. It's my privilege and pleasure to be here with you and to meet you. I've been on the job for seven weeks, and for the last week, as I was talking to the mayor just before the meeting started, my family is now with us. We were apart for about four or five weeks, and so it's wonderful to be together. It has been an absolute privilege getting to know the Thurston County area. I actually stayed just right over here for those four weeks in the downtown Olympia area and got to experience the taste of food and some of the great events that you had. Also, the farmer's market can't be beat. So, a little bit about me, I hail from Southern California, San Marino County area, where I was a county manager there. Equivalent was a chief executive officer. Had worked in that organization, gosh, for about 24 years, but did spend some time up in the King County area, worked for the library system. That's the kind of path I came through, library service, started off as a 19-year-old reading stories to five-year-olds. Never thought that I would move forward in a career in government and take on administrative roles, but did so and really have enjoyed it. And so now here with Thurston County, I know there are several things that we're working on, and have a great board and commissioners, as you well know, who are very interested in working collaboratively together and seeing how we can work in big projects and move things forward. And I know there's a couple of things already in the pipeline that I'm getting up to date on and look forward to working on with you. So with that, I just want to thank you so much. I really have appreciated getting to know your city manager. You know, part of when you're looking for a new job and what will ultimately be a new place to live, is you kind of get a gauge of what's the temperature and the climate of the people that are interviewing you and what they create. Well, in my process, second panel, Jay was on there, and his smile and his outgoing personality, and I think he said something like, "Yeah, we like to have fun here. We like to do good work here." And I walked away with my wife when I got into the car saying, "These are some really great people," and Jay was part of that. So I know he's a representation of you all in the great city of Olympia, and so it's gonna be a great pleasure working with him and getting to know him. So with that, any questions, or if you want to introduce yourselves, happy to hand it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Leonard, and welcome. Any questions or comments from council? Sure. Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Welcome to Thurston County, and we like Jay, too. My question, you've got a couple of kiddos here, what are their names?
Yes, so I do have a tribe of five kiddos. There's two here, two on their way, and one's gonna stay in California to finish college. So these are the younger two. We have Samuel, why don't you raise your hand, Samuel? And Elijah, who does not like to be embarrassed, but why don't you raise your hand? I'll probably get a kick in the shin on the way out here for that one, but yeah, we're just so happy to have them here, and they're loving exploring, climbing trees, and the new house has a spa, and so they've been in it, I think, almost every single day, even in the rain.
Well, welcome to you and welcome to your family.
My apologies, Councilmember Gilman. I've got Councilmember Cooper on her brain of the members that are excused this evening. Councilmember Gilman.
We haven't met yet. How do you do? I'm Clark Gilman. I'm glad to meet you and part of your family, and I hope that you'll check out the Timberland Library Branches around Thurston County also, now that you're here. We're pretty proud of that system.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Hey, thank you for coming tonight. Not everyone does this. This is great, and you didn't have to spend your time here, and you brought your family as well. So just really appreciate and respect that you came to formally say hello and introduce yourself. I think we're so fortunate as a county to have bright folks that want to relocate to serve the county, so really looking forward to getting to know you more. We've had only just one meeting together. It was over lunch, and typically at like business lunch, there's always those folks that like pretend like they're not hungry, right? But if anything, the food was probably the draw. And you had two pizzas on your plate, and you were going in, and I was like, "Oh, this is one of those real people." Yeah, and then throughout the meeting, I was impressed as well. But my name is Ian Nguyen. I have been on council for, this will be my fourth year, and just like the rest of my council colleagues, we all love Olympia for different reasons, and looking forward to hearings, not only just working together, but also hearing ways that we can improve and the things that you can enjoy. Very interested that you also worked in the library system for a little bit. We have some council members that are very keen on making sure that we support our Olympia library. We need a new location, basically. But anyway, so I might be picking your brain about that a little bit, but anyhow, welcome. Your family's gorgeous, and thanks for being here.
Councilmember Parsley.
I am gonna be the last council member tonight to say welcome, but seriously, welcome and welcome to your family. You guys should check out the farmer's market. Have you done that? Yeah, it's pretty cool. And Percival Landing, I'm a boat person, so go down there, you can see all kinds of boats coming in and out. One of the things I'm very proud about Thurston County and our region is since I've been on council, our collaboration between our jurisdictions has only increased. And for me, that's very exciting because I've learned that we will be more powerful against these issues if we work as partners, and we're doing that. And you mentioned one of the people that's helped us get there, and that's the person behind you named Jay, who is our city manager. It'll be fun to welcome you into that collaborative group, and I hope you enjoy being up here. It's gonna be a little wetter, but if you're a climate change person, this is the place to be.
Thank you all. Yeah, and I just want to say, welcome again to you and your lovely family. Sounds like you've got some, at least some, a little bit of a taste of our fake summer since you've been here. I, you know, really just kind of want to express my delight that you are here. You know, it is, we can't take for granted when there's a position such as important as yours when there is a vacancy, you know, that we quickly then fill that position with somebody who is, whose values and vision are as closely aligned as possible to the various cities within that community, particularly for you as a community. So I'm really hoping that we are. It seems like we are. I think, for what it's worth, the issues of housing, public safety, and in particular, are issues that I think between the city of Olympia and the county that certainly we have done extensive work on, and we want to continue to do more work with you in that regard. And I would like to see some more partnership in the economic development front as well going forward into the future. Actually, speaking of that, we have a wonderful hands-on children's museum here. You have two. I'm not, have you gone yet?
We've walked by, but we waited to go until they're here, so we're looking forward to getting a free weekend, but it looks wonderful.
Yes, you will love it. So, and not just the kids, you're gonna want to join them. It's a great museum. We have people from, actually from all over the country come and visit Olympia just to go to the museum, so please go check it out. Would we have the pleasure of having you as residents of Olympia by any chance?
No, we, we are in an unincorporated area of the county, so, yeah.
I had to ask. Well, again, you know, welcome and very, our very best wishes to you in the future and to your family as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure, and could we invite you up for a pic with the council members so that we can commemorate your welcome?
We would love that. Do you mind if I bring my family?
Oh, no.
Not at all.
Okay.
It's a requirement, actually.
So with that, I need a motion to, am I on? There we go. Okay. So with that, I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. So first item this evening is item 2A, which is special recognition for a proclamation recognizing Olympia Heritage Month, which will be read by Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Whereas, the city of Olympia values the positive financial, social, and environmental impacts of historic preservation and its contribution to the unique character, livability, and lovability of our community. And whereas, history and heritage are living and dynamic forces in a healthy community. And whereas, the stories and lived experiences of Olympians are as diverse as the people and events of our world, and evident in many differing and sometimes under-recognized forms. And whereas, Olympia's architecture and built environment is but a starting point for community building and telling the stories of all Olympians, especially those of marginalized and underrepresented populations. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim May 2024 as Olympia Heritage Month and encourages all residents to explore, recognize, and celebrate our diverse history and heritage, and to expand access to it for all Olympians. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this 21st day of May, 2024, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. And I'd like to invite up Garner Miller of the Heritage Commission to receive the proclamations.
He was indisposed tonight. He really meant to be here, and this means a lot to the Heritage Commission and to the community, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes special recognition for this evening, and I'd like to turn it over to public comment. So it looks like we have one person signed up in person this evening. So it looks like you have spoken in the last 30 days, so you are familiar with our rules. So there is a clock to my left, your right, and you'll have two minutes for your comments. So I'll turn it over to the Mayor Protem.
Cindy, you're back. I have an outstanding email from you, I think. Yes, I'll get back to it. Thank you, thank you for joining us, and you can go ahead and public comment when you're ready.
I wanted to bring to the city council's attention that after the laws for the rental protections were passed and go into effect today, our landlord is Olympic Management and sent out every single lease renewal that they possibly could, seven months minus in advance, to let us know that we were being given $150 a month increase to try to circumvent the laws coming into effect today. Those notices were given to anyone that was on the property eligible for them on Thursday. And I just wanted to let the council know that this was already happening, and I didn't know if there was clarifications in languages that could be considered on the bills that's written, because this is already becoming an issue, and it hasn't even started yet. So we have to remember that these companies, every single year, make record profits, and they go, and they choose the market rents. They all come as an association, and they all sit together and decide what they want these rent increases to be. They're the ones that set the market rent, and that's where we're headed now. So I don't know how widespread that this will become, but it's an issue already. Thank you.
That concludes in-person public comment, and I believe we didn't have anyone signed up virtually.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the dais? Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, thanks for coming and speaking about that issue. You mentioned you've got an email into Mayor Protem. If you can actually email all of us on the council, we will be revisiting, you know, tenant protections again later in the year at the land use committee to see, you know, what we need to tweak and what other things that we need to be working on there, so we can raise it to the attention of our staff who are in the background doing this work right now. So please, you know, get the word out to all of us, and we can elevate it to our staff to incorporate into the work that they're doing. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you for coming here. I said something before, but I just want to be, say it publicly, it's very brave for you to show up, and I appreciate this. The quick math I did, it's over a 9% closing on a 10% increase in your rent. I'm sharing across the dais what you handed me, so everybody can see it. Thank you, and I'm glad to hear land use is gonna be taking this up. This is, when does this go into effect exactly? Today or tomorrow?
I don't have the date off the top of my head.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, Cindy, I just wanted to make sure that this was, is this a copy we can keep?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, we will make sure we make copies and disseminate it amongst all of us. Thank you. Mayor Protem Nguyen.
I was just gonna say, we'll be talking definitely amongst us, but then also with staff on, a lot of times if we don't have resources in-house, and we have lots of partnerships, and I just, I'd love for you to have someone to be a support with you throughout this and kind of pushing a rock up a hill. Yeah, so while we, I love that land use is gonna be revisiting it, and also that's, you know, months go by, right? So, but I see that Assistant City Manager, Richoy, is standing ready to chat with you.
All right, well, that concludes public comment for the evening, so we will move on to adoption of the consent calendar. Any questions, comments, or polls this evening from the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agendas signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is adopted. So that takes us to our first item of business this evening, which is item 6A, which is an update on our neighborhood centers. And here to present this evening is Casey Schaeffler, our Associate Planner from Community Planning and Development.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. I'm gonna try to be brief. I'm gonna be introducing our consultants that drafted this report for us tonight here in a moment, but first I would like to just, and for the record, my name is Casey Schaeffler, Associate Planner with Community Planning and Development. The intent of the briefing tonight is to present the report. I'm not here asking for adoption or changes at this time. I am looking for feedback from council on possible work priorities and to also answer any questions that we have at the conclusion of our consultant's presentation. I would also, in a moment, I'll just go over some of the next steps on how this will influence our upcoming 2045 Comprehensive Plan Update and subsequent Olympia Municipal Code Updates. So this report is a final deliverable of the services provided by the outside consultants Makers Development and Urban Design and Leland Consulting. Their goal was to provide independent market analysis of existing centers and to provide citywide policy change recommendations that would affect existing and future centers. As I mentioned, Community Planning and Development enlisted the help of Makers Architecture and Urban Design, as well as Leland Consulting Group. Joining us in a moment will be Rachel Miller, Senior Associate at Makers Architecture and Urban Design, and I believe Brian Vanaman, he might not be available until 6:30, so he may be joining us slightly later, but he is a principal at Leland Consulting Group. So I mentioned next steps. This report is very much informing some of the decisions that we will consider for our land use and urban design chapter in the OLE 2045 update. The report is a guiding document. It's not here to create immediate changes either in the comprehensive plan as anything outside of our OLE 2045 project, and we're not necessarily seeking any immediate changes in our municipal code. The report provides guidance for prioritizing neighborhood center-focused updates in our OLE 2045 Comprehensive Plan Update, and it outlines possible tax amendments for Olympia Municipal Code that could reduce some of the barriers and result in more successful neighborhood centers in the future. It also provides some examples of economic development programs that have been successful in some other cities in Pacific Northwest and throughout. OLE 2045 is happening now. That is our best opportunity to update goals and priorities as recommended in the Land Use and Urban Design Chapter, followed by those changes to municipal code. The draft report has been presented to the Planning Commission, the Land Use and Environment Committee, the Council of Neighborhood Associations, and the public through a virtual open house. And in all of those settings, we've been asking, of the options provided in the report, what does the community and the city council want us to prioritize and focus as we move forward with the Olympia 2045 Comprehensive Plan Update? So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Rachel with Makers Architecture. I will be here to answer any questions, and you'll note that my slides also include some reference documents that might help inform some of your, or respond to some of your questions after this presentation. So with that, looks like we have Rachel, so thank you.
Thank you, Casey, and thank you, council. Can everybody hear me and see me okay?
Yes, we can. We can see you and hear you.
Thank you. I will start sharing my screen. Okay, so thank you again, council, for having me here tonight. It's really a pleasure to be talking about this project. And yes, Brian Vanaman should, of Leland Consulting Group, should also be joining at 6:30, so you'll see him in a little bit. I am an urban designer and urban planner at Makers Architecture and Urban Design, and we started working on this project with you all, I believe, in 2021, right at the end of 2021, and so we're glad to be back and wrapping it up now. So what are neighborhood centers? Just a friendly reminder, they are intended to be small, they're different from your urban centers, they're walk and transit friendly, they're business clusters, and they're usually set within residential neighborhoods, and they serve the day-to-day retail and service needs of local residents, and they foster community interaction. So that's the vision that has been around in Olympia for at least 20 years, and our purview was to figure out why that wasn't happening as much as people had hoped. So our job was to evaluate the current status of the neighborhood centers, and we did that a couple of ways. Brian's gonna talk more about the market conditions and market analysis that we looked at, and Makers spent a lot of time looking at the physical characteristics of the neighborhood centers and the parcels and the streets and the sidewalks and everything around them. And then we were to identify barriers to the vision. So you've had the policies on the books for 20-plus years, and you've been excited about them, a lot of neighbors are really interested in this, why isn't it happening? So one that we'll focus on a lot today are development regulations. We also talked with people through a variety of methods. We went to a couple of the neighborhood centers and held pop-up workshops there. We did have an online survey, and then also online citywide workshops and several briefings through Kerry Hornbine, mostly at the time. And then our job was to identify policies and actions to support healthy centers, so that's what we're mostly gonna be talking about tonight with you, is the recommendations from the report. So we're here right at the very end. We were put on hold for a little while after Kerry retired, but we're very glad to be back and wrapping up this phase of work. I should also mention that there was another phase back in 2014 or 2015 that was the first phase, so glad to be bringing you all the final recommendations. Okay, so how did we evaluate these and what did we learn? You have 12 neighborhood centers that are designated today, and we looked at all of those in detail. So those are the blue ones, and the purple ones are not what we looked at. So just to clarify, they are part of Master Plan Villages and had a very different zoning and development standard concept to them, and so they were not part of what we looked at. We also did not look at urban centers or high-capacity or high-density corridor-zoned areas. We did at first, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But one thing to note while I have this map up is that most of these centers, or I should say, most of Olympia, is covered by your 15-minute walk sheds to these centers, and the areas that aren't covered by these neighborhood centers are generally covered by all the other higher-intensity centers that are in Olympia. So that's good to note, especially as you're working on your comprehensive plan. You can walk to some kind of commercial service within 15 minutes. And I'm just gonna check if Brian has joined in, because we're getting into the market analysis, and we're still three minutes early, so I'm gonna push forward with his, and I'll speak for Brian here, and he'll be back to answer questions and clarify. So we tried a variety of methods and looked at many different quantitative and qualitative measures, and had a few theories about what made really good centers, and there's a lot of data on what makes good compact and complete communities, and so those were the kind of metrics we were looking at. But in terms of what neighborhoods Olympians felt were super-successful, those are generally where the West Side Co-op is, the Wildwood Center, and San Francisco Street Bakery. These are all really beloved centers in Olympia, so that's why they're highlighted yellow on this slide. The one metric that we used that really strongly associated with people's perception of healthy neighborhoods, centers, was the presence of a few key commercial places, and so those are a bakery, a coffee shop, a restaurant, a food store, like a convenience store or a grocery store. So if it had about three to five of those or more, then it was considered or perceived as a really good center. So that was something we then started to aim for, and Brian is here. I'll let his audio keep connecting for a second. So I just talked through this slide, Brian, about how this was the strongest correlation to what Olympians perceive as their neighborhood centers. Do you want to take it from here and go on to the next slide, or do you want me to keep going?
I can take it from there.
Okay, great.
Well, good evening, councilors and Rachel and others. So in addition to the things that we looked at, that Carrie, that Rachel covered, that we saw were correlated with the success of neighborhood centers, we also looked at barriers. The first one is the The first one is the amount of land, the acres zoned neighborhood retail, which is, which is thought to be the primary zone in Olympia where one could build small local retail. And what we found is there's just not a lot of land that is owned neighborhood retail. So of the, of all the centers, you can see a number of them have zero acres zoned for neighborhood retail, and many, most of them, the rest have less than one acre. And of those, for example, Wildwood, probably virtually all of that .5 acres is occupied by the, by the Wildwood Center. So there's not a lot of this, this land that's, that's owned neighborhood retail. Next. And you can see here, actually, this is probably an even better illustration of that point. I mean, I think the Frog Pond example is just astonishingly severe, really. The Frog Pond Grocery is the only property anywhere in this center that's zoned neighborhood retail. It's about four or 5,000 square feet in size, so maybe a tenth of an acre. And all the other properties are, are residentially zoned. And so, you know, at a fundamental level, this is one of our findings, the part of the reason, and significant part of the reason that the city of Olympia is not getting the types of centers that people want is because it's just not allowed. It literally is illegal in most, in most of these centers. And it's probably the most important and also the most basic of our findings. Next slide. Another barrier to, to the development in, in centers is the fact that in centers, rents tend to be lower. $13 to $20 a square foot. We did our work in 2022, so perhaps they've risen a little bit since then. Whereas at the time, new retail properties, for example, those in Hawks Prairie, were renting at $30 a square foot, and that's the, the amount that developers look to in order to justify the cost of, of new development. And there's a couple of reasons for this. You know, a lot of the neighborhood centers don't have high-traffic counts like you might find on major arterials. They also tend to be small local tenants, as we've talked about, rather than national credit tenants, and those small local tenants will, will pay less. So, and, and so that kind of conspires to make it more difficult. In addition, what we've seen recently is that interest rates across all kinds of development and all kinds of borrowing, whether for a single-family home or for new development, you can see on the right, construction loan rates have gone from about 3% to, to 8%. That, that makes development more difficult. So I think we've covered all this, but the, you know, the strongest indicator of a center's success is, is whether it has these local retailers. That corresponded most highly to whether people thought it was successful. There, we didn't cover this, but there does appear to be, in virtually all cases, more demand as, which is also called leakage in our report, which I can explain. It basically means that, that the dollars are leaking elsewhere outside of the centers and being spent elsewhere. So in theory, more commercial development could take place in the centers, but there are barriers. There's not a lot of neighborhood retail-owned land. There's, there's very little low-cost land, which I didn't cover, but most of the land is built out as something else, and then commercial lease rates are, are low. And, and that's one of the reasons, although rents are low and, and will struggle to support new construction, it'll, in most cases, it's easier for them to support adaptive reuse of existing structures, which in a lot of cases is, is less expensive, and we'll talk more about that.
Okay, and so I will talk a little bit about what we heard, because as we found these barriers, we did want to hear about what people thought about potential changes. So there were three major questions we asked of interest tonight. There were other things on the surveys as well. But as Brian mentioned, one of the barriers is, is that small-scale commercial is not currently allowed in most of the neighborhood centers, except where they have the NR Zone, and many of them don't have it or don't have a lot of it. So we asked people, would you be interested in seeing small commercial spaces come into neighborhoods, whether it's reusing an old house or building a small, little commercial place? We heard a resounding yes, that people are very interested. So these are the results from an online workshop, and then we also saw the same results from 258 responses on an online survey. So resounding yes to small-scale commercial. And then also small mixed-use buildings, so that's the type of building that is allowed in NR Zones. So people also wanted to see more of that type of zoning, for that to be allowed in Olympia in more places, and both from the online workshop and also from the online survey. Same responses, strong support for those things. We also looked at the densities of housing near the neighborhood centers, and there isn't as much of a correlation between the success of the centers and a higher population as we would have expected to see. There was a lot of auto trips to the, the successful places. But we did think that it was worth asking the question because of the connection between land use and transportation. Why are people driving to the centers more? There may be a relationship to how many people are living nearby. And as we've seen in many other cities, it doesn't hurt to have more people living near your neighborhood centers and commercial centers to help, to help support those businesses. So we did ask the question, and we did hear that people would like to see a greater variety in housing types very close to centers, so within a quarter or a half mile, both in the online open house and in the online survey. So from what we learned, what does that mean? So just to review the key findings again, we didn't talk about the data behind this, but there is a reliance on auto access right now in the successful centers. And so that means for our recommendations that policy support for those healthy centers and the land use and transportation connection is an important thing for us to focus on. And then, of course, as Brian talked about permitting the small commercial uses in residential zones, and there's a variety of ways we could look at that. There's sort of one path that we recommend a little more than others, which we'll talk about in a little bit. And then also a variety of citywide programs to support businesses. And we'll talk about each of those. So again, in that land use and transportation planning and policies to support that, you can see in the report a series of policy amendments that you could consider during your comp plan update, such as refining the criteria for citing neighborhood centers, the distance between them, the market area, the amount of commercial space you might be aiming for, and also all the things that support it from the physical characteristics side. So not just the market, and, you know, they'll feed each other, but the sidewalks, transit access, and civic activity. So it's not just businesses. People did want to see parks and schools and the neighborhood, near the neighborhood centers as well. And of course, the housing types. So more, more people certainly won't hurt to be able to support businesses and be able to walk to them. So we also looked at which centers do have potential to work as neighborhood centers going forward and how to support them. And one thing that we learned was several of these had already been planned for higher intensities, either right at the center or right nearby. So two of them actually are dropping, or we recommend dropping, as a neighborhood center. So Kellerman's Corner and the Yager Way area, near Capital Mall Triangle. There's already high-intensity zoning nearby, and in the case of Yager, there wasn't any land available for redevelopment at that neighborhood center to, for the neighborhood scale type of development. And then one of them, Cooper Point, could be better located a little bit away from where it is currently, or it could drop. It's a challenging area as a neighborhood center, where the location is right now. And then also, there could be a few new centers and a process for designating those. So the East Side Neighborhood near Swan Town Inn is one that came up a lot, as well as Friendly Grove, and those are noted with the stars. So you can see that also kind of fills in some of the areas that didn't have neighborhood centers in those areas. And that should be looked at during the Comprehensive Plan Update. So within the existing NR Zone, there are some barriers, and then there are some other regulations that, when you layer them all together, start to make it really hard to develop small commercial in the neighborhood centers. So one of them is parking requirements, and I think you're already looking at citywide parking reductions. That would also help small commercial spaces and development in neighborhood centers. And then also, the NR Zone has some development standards that are limiting the amount of area on the site that can be used for development. So the side yard setbacks, for example, are quite wide. The minimum lot size is a little bit larger than you might need. A few things are adding up together there to make it challenging to fit something there. And then a big one we heard about through the interviews was the trash pickup. So looking at what you could do there to make it simpler and easier, allowing carts maybe when it's appropriate. Also, the uses that are allowed in the NR Zone, we could remove gas stations as a use, and then new uses that people showed some interest in were small-scale healthcare, like dentists type of places. And then maybe evaluating small pubs or wine tasting if that seems appropriate. And then also, simple administrative design review. So this doesn't come without some scariness to it. Changes in neighborhoods can be scary. So one thing that helps is to have some design standards and a simple process that can help neighborhoods feel confident that they'll see the types of small commercial places that they're envisioning. Okay, and to Brian to talk about.
So Rachel talked about potential changes in the neighborhood retail zone. This slide applies to potential changes in residential zones. So really, most of the area in, in, in centers are zoned residential. What we proposed here, and we actually proposed or offered several different ways to, you know, accomplish similar kinds of things. This was our primary recommendation, to add a new use that's called small commercial uses in the residential chapter in the table of, of allowed uses. And that would be defined as commercial uses that are, that are 1,000 square feet or less. They would have to be part of an existing structure. They would have different setback requirements. Rachel mentioned that a little bit. You can see on the right side, that would allow them to extend up to the sidewalk and be like other retail uses. And these could be allowed within 300 feet or about a block of an existing, one of the intersections where the center is, or it could be in a larger area. It could be 600 feet. It could be even more than that. We understand that the city has had conversations about allowing something like small commercial uses much more broadly. So there's a lot of ways this could be applied. Also, I would say, you know, the uses that are allowed within the kind of core of a center of, say, 300 feet could be, there could be different types of regulations for the, in the core of the center versus somewhere further out. For example, you know, a typical perception is that things like a, a coffee shop have a more of an impact than a, than a chiropractor. Chiropractor could be allowed more broadly, just as an example. We go through some of that in the report. Next slide. We also recommend a building improvement grant program. These are offered in many cities. We list a few, Tacoma, Auburn, Beaverton, Oregon is one that, that my firm worked on. And there, it's a competitive program where building owners, property owners, sometimes tenants approach the city and want to make some improvements to their building. It can include, include facade improvements or building systems such as, such as roofs or, or things that support restaurants, like a hood. And they can be a variety of, of scales, but, you know, 5,000, 50,000 is not uncommon. And then typically, the building owner matches that one-for-one. And it's not clear, as we went through, you know, we, what the funding source would be, although we listed a number of funding sources that have the potential. It's not a cheap program, but we, we've seen it be really successful, particularly, as I mentioned, in, in Beaverton, Oregon. It's been great to watch so many old buildings get rehabbed and come, come more to life. Rachel? So we also, you can see on the right here, these are some other citywide programs. A, a bunch of sites came up that could be studied more by the city. And when I say studied more, it could be, the city could have architects, urban designers, financial analysts, other, others try to figure out what would work on a particular site. We pointed two that came up, two sites that came up repeatedly, one next to the San Francisco Bakery and one bit to the south. And so those could be studied more, and that would help the property owners to understand the, the potential there. Also help the city understand what regulations may be holding development back. Next slide.
Okay, so the final chapter of the plan looks at the neighborhood-specific actions that you could pursue, and the types of actions that are identified there are often about sidewalks and street improvements. And as Brian just mentioned, meeting with local property owners and businesses and neighbors to explore options for small zones, really site-specific and only if, you know, all the property owners are interested as well and the neighborhood is looking for it. And then also just redevelopment opportunities. And so making those connections and fostering the relationships and the type of development that people do want to see. And then others that are sort of one-offs. For example, this phone's an 18th center. There was support for it to continue as a center, but there were some constrictions and a lack of NR zoning in the place where it's designated now. So maybe it's a floating center that just goes with development. So where there's development interest, then it could move there. So there's a lot more detail in the report. We invite you to peruse that at your leisure. But overall, we do think that there is promise for the types of neighborhood centers that Olympia has envisioned to, to happen over time. And thank you so much for having us here.
Thank you so much, Rachel and Brian and Casey. So before we get into questions and comments, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Madron, who is the Chair of our Land Use and Environment Committee, for a few comments.
Yeah, don't worry. I don't have a 10-minute speech prepared at this time. So this came through the Land Use and Environment Committee a couple months ago, a month and a half ago, something like that. And I guess I'm the only one from land use here tonight, so I'm going to represent the whole committee here. And, you know, we're recognizing that this document that we're, that, that has been presented to us and we've all reviewed is a strategy document. It's not a policy document. The policy will come and the changes that we make to the Comprehensive Plan, the direction that we give staff on what we're moving forward. And so, you know, recognizing that we're not, like, changing the document in front of us, but we, but this is going to help provide the direction of what we do next. And I think one of the biggest barriers with neighborhood centers is it requires that individual people want to choose to open up a business in one of those areas. And you can't force somebody to do that. You can only create the kind of conditions that would entice somebody to want to do it and see that they could have a viable business there. And so, you know, overall, from the Land Use Committee, I would say, you know, when it comes to this strategy document, you know, yes to all of these things. Like, we need to address the zoning code in neighborhood centers to remove barriers, you know, the economic development options, the, the building improvement program. All of those things are things we're interested in exploring to help activate the areas that have been designated. And we also discussed, rather than just talking about small commercial uses right, right outside of neighborhood centers to just allowing small commercial uses throughout all residential areas of Olympia. And there, there was actually a, a bill that we talked about not too long ago, because we were talking about our legislative agenda. HB 2252 would have required cities actually to allow cafes throughout all residential areas. And it actually passed unanimously in the House and then totally bombed in the Senate. But, you know, that's what we talked about in the Land Use Committee. And just to give credit where it's due, you know, this has been a three-year process with this, and Clark was on the Land Use Committee when this first came around to us, and he said, why not just allow, you know, these small commercial uses to happen in other places? And all the thinking behind this is like, you know, if we can't, if we can't make somebody open up a business in the places where we hope that they will do it, maybe they can come about more organically where people have access. maybe they can come about more organically where people have access to property and interest in opening a business. And then the may- ma- maybe the neighborhood center designation can follow where the interest is. Um, you know, it's interesting to see Swan Town Inn as a proposed new neighborhood center because a few years ago, we heard from the owner of that business and he really just wanted to open up a small cafe where he already has a business, um, and, you know, be able to give co- not give, sell coffee to his neighbors. Um, and he wasn't allowed to do it. And so like, how can we get around these issues so that, yes, he can open up that coffee shop? And then we as a city respond to that interest um and uh make it make it more flexible and more easy for that to happen. So, um, all that is to say is like, yes to everything in this document. Let's support our designated neighborhood centers that we there's art, they've already been vetted by the community. So let's do the investments needed there, change the zoning code, work on the transportation stuff, economic development, all of that. But also, see where else the interest is in the city by changing our zoning code to allow those small commercial uses anywhere in residential neighborhoods. That's all.
Yes, thank you for that summary and um framing the the discussion. Any comments from council? Mayor Pro Tem Wen followed by Councilmember Partially.
Um, really appreciate the presentation tonight. Um, I I think many of us are are fans of neighborhood centers, more neighborhood centers. Um, uh, I wonder if uh on land use you had you had all talked about uh the the sort of the other side of it, right? On on one hand, we have community members that are saying, hey, I want to open up something. Um, or hey, I would like, I think many of them are saying, hey, we'd like to have something in our neighborhood. We're not sure what, but we'd love for it to be allowed here. Um, and uh, and I remember how frustrating it was for, you know, for the owner of uh Swan Town that just wanted to, I think, just like sell some muffins and it was like just drip coffee. And they were, you know, maybe going to expand more, see it like, see how it goes and it was going to be walk up. And then we also had um uh neighbors that said, hey, this is zone for residential. Where are these people going to park? Is this going to eh drive up traffic? Um, and and then I think about just uh, you know, outside of just that one one place. But then also, so we got parking, tr- uh, is it going to be a higher traffic area now? And then um, and then also people often wonder about like noise, right? And so, these are, I'd love for those things to just go away. Um, so can you talk to me a little bit about that? Um, because those are, those are also things that come along with it. And so, did you all talk about that at all?
We didn't get too deep into it, um, you know, but I think those are things that can be addressed um through. I mean, you it wouldn't be, okay, anybody can just open a coffee shop anywhere. It's okay, anybody can apply for a permit to open up a coffee shop anywhere. And that permit comes with requirements that need to be addressed, right? And so, we're not, it it wouldn't just be, you know, a a free for all in that sense. Um, and so like, you know, when it comes to challenges with noise, you know, we could limit uh the hours of a uh commercial business. Uh, when it comes to issues of parking, you know, we could require a certain amount of parking spaces. Uh, or if it's near transit, um, you know, or it's near, you know, a place where there that that where where there's generally enough parking, um, you know, those are things that we would consider further on down the line. Um, because it's not a change that we would make overnight. We would do community engagement around it. Um, and, you know, we've made a lot of changes to neighborhoods. Um, some people haven't wanted to have a duplex near them. And, you know, at a certain point, we balance the community interests and uh, you know, uh and 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 make a decision.
I appreciate that. Um, I agree that all of these things can be addressed. And I also, uh, you know, these what, these things are kind of, these issues are sort of pervasive in a lot of projects that we try to do, not just neighborhood centers. Right? These are the kind of the constant uh uh issues that come about and things that we hear about. And so, uh, yeah, I'm I'm hopeful to hear down the line, um, not only how wonderful neighborhood centers are. Because I I don't believe that our council needs to be convinced of how wonderful they are. I think we're we're all on board. What we we need to know is like, what are some of those like sticky wickets, you know? What are we going to have to come up against? What are those clever solutions? Um, and uh really looking into diving into diving into that. Um, oh, you said something that's uh just sparked something. I think there is something to be said about, we've done the outreach. You know, and so, so we, yes, we'll keep on, you know, communications, uh, well, we always try to improve on it. We always try to do more outreach. And also, there is a point where like, okay, we've done the outreach. As, you know, does this analysis paralysis, can we just make a decision and move on, you know? So, so I I think about that with this, it's like, okay, let's just, let's like, a little more chatting, a little bit more action. So I'm I'm keen to see this uh, to see this happen. Uh, really, really uh glad that uh there's folks on council, smart folks, looking to see, hey, how do we reduce the barriers? Um, and I'm not sure if it needs an entire uh uh focus group effort again. You know, but can it be smaller? Can can we be more nimble and just move fast on it?
Yeah, and to be clear, when I said we've done the outreach, I meant on the established neighborhood centers that are that are already zoned. Um, and so, we would probably do, want to do a little bit more engagement before we did broad uh residential uh changes to residential uh areas. Um, and it would be a process. Our first step would be getting the goals of the comprehensive plan. And then the Land Use Committee finding out when we're going to have time to work on all of this stuff with staff. And so it it um, uh, so we we would want to dig a little bit more into community engagement with broader changes than what's already in this strategy. But everything that's in this strategy has been thoroughly vetted by the community. So that's what I was trying to say.
Very important clarification. Uh, Councilmember Partially followed by Councilmember Gilman.
That was the next one exchange you two. Um, good presentation and I read through the packet. Um, it was fun. I, I'm, a couple of things that float around in my head, and this sort of goes to Councilmember Madron. Um, I was just trying to imagine what the comp plan strategy would be envisioning. What would be your bullet points, I guess? Um, and how are we going to overlay the TMP and our parking? So that we encourage the community centers, because I I can't help but think when I look at the ones that are not successful, you've got very, very busy roads right by them. It's not just that there's no commercial there. It's certainly part of it, but nobody really wants to walk there if they can help it. And um, so they're going to use their car. So how are we going to overlay that? And then as a person who did develop a commercial property, two of them, parking can be in prohibitive. I mean, when was the last time we looked at commercial parking? I know we just did a re- residential.
I know you're looking at me. I think some of these questions might be for staff and 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 potentially the consultants. Uh, but you'll be happy to know, we are talking about commercial parking as it pertains to the Capitol Mall Triangle very soon. But um Casey, I don't know if you want to take a shot at some of those questions and uh and uh in terms of like how the TMP interacts with the neighborhood centers and and meets the needs for multimodal transportation.
I'll do my best. Um, so the the neighborhood centers are supposed, the the the, they're envisioned as walkable, bikeable areas, and it's supposed to serve a local localized spot. Um, I think as our consultants have kind of pointed out, our three most successful ones are far more reliant on traffic. Um, and uh across the city and beyond the city, um, showing up to those particular locations. So our consultants are are definitely trying to emphasize the need for additional sidewalk connections. Um, as as noted in the report, and I try to highlight in some of my appendix slides. I'll see if I can go to, I don't know if I included the most information here. One of the notes that I would point out is that our walk scores for the twelve um neighborhood centers throughout the city, the twelve combined score are thirty-nine out of hundred for walkability. So, um, zero being bad, one hundred being very good, we're averaging thirty-nine for walkability in our existing neighborhood centers. So, really emphasizing that walkability, bikeability um would help support um neighborhood centers as they are. And I will point out that that has been a topic of um major discussion uh for the Olympia Planning Commission. I believe for the Land Use and Environment Committee as well for the last two to three years. So, I know that as we're approaching the capital facilities uh plan uh for this year, the annual capital facilities plan, um, I can tell you that our planning commission is very focused on sidewalks and and seeing those improvements throughout the city. Um, but I believe as they're reviewing this report, this will be uh one of the key points that they bring up is that if we want uh walkable, viable neighborhood centers, um, we need to be improving our sidewalk uh and bike infrastructure. Um, so with the other question that you had talked about, comp plan envisioning, and pardon me, is I kind of s- I'm going to skip around slightly. Again, um, comprehensive uh plan goals and policies. Um, Councilmember Madron uh at our Land Use and Environment Committee, you had asked me to come back with um some some of those goals and policies. I tried to go through that. I think one of the things that I would actually point out, so goal twenty-one that you see here, that's a new proposed goal, um, to, or excuse me, a new policy under goal twenty-one. Um, that's actually proposed in the re- report. And then when I was going through comprehensive plan, I think one of the things to take a look at, if we want to support particularly small commercial uses throughout the city, I think there's opportunities when you're looking here at um the appendix, which actually defines our low density neighborhoods. Um, low density neighborhoods is the majority of our um residential zoning types. So your R four to eight, your R six to twelve throughout the city. I think it's something like sixty-eight percent of our city is low density neighborhood. Um, if you're looking at this definition, it's talking about medium density neighborhood centers are allowed within uh density neighborhoods. Um, I didn't draft anything because I didn't want to come here like it's a proposal. But I wanted to bring that up, that it's possible that we could tweak that particular definition to include something along the lines of small commercial um uses are allowed within low density neighborhoods. Same when you're looking at the neighborhood centers definition, which is separate. I think there are areas within the comp plan, um definitions, appendix, and kind of throughout, not just in our goals and policies, but actually looking at what a low density neighborhood is as our future land use map. And then, once we make those changes in the comprehensive plan, that's when we can really get into some of the technical details of what does that mean when we get to the zoning. But I think what I'm kind of hearing and what I've heard from um Land Use and Environment and from the Planning Commission is looking at the zoning type that is in the residential chapter. So, I'm going to go to another slide real quick. When we're looking at the zoning types, so when you look on the left, you've got a neighborhood center that's surrounded by residential four to eight, and then you've got neighborhood retail. Those are in two different chapters, two different um development guidelines. Neighborhood retail is a commercial district that we basically slap in the middle of our residential district. So it's two different chapters. That can be challenging for somebody, um, as we've kind of pointed out, if you're a small business owner, person trying to start a small business, trying to navigate different chapters, different design review things. It can be relatively challenging if you don't do this on a daily basis or have a legal team that can do this for you. So, um, looking at the possibility of uh either taking the neighborhood retail and actually applying it to our residential chapter, um, because right now residential chapter, the only business type use that you really see is um uh uh home, home businesses. Um, and then when you look at the right side, again, this is over on the South Capital Neighborhood, you've got that one parcel that you see here that has the NR, that's the Frog Pond. That's the only neighborhood retail that's in that particular neighborhood center. But right adjacent to it is another um retail type, the professional office residential mixed use. NR and PORM have very different guidelines, very different permissible uses. So, um, what you could do in a neighborhood retail is not necessarily the same thing you can do in PORM. So, when we're looking at those small conditional or small commercial uses, I think we're trying to streamline that slightly so that you've got, um, particularly um as the report defines it and what we've heard from the community is, small uses like a small grocery, a coffee shop, maybe a small restaurant. And there are actually some definitions on what we could allow. So, looking at this um, this particular uh picture on the right, PORM, a small restaurant or bakery is actually a conditional use. So if you tried to do a bakery in that complex, you would, you would actually have a more difficult time getting that approved there than if you were to do it in the neighborhood retail where you're actually um as a permissible use, able to do it there. But you can't do it there because there's no space to do it. So the only opportunity to do a bakery or small restaurant in the neighborhood retail is if you rezone somewhere in that vicinity. So it's very challenging. Um, I think I went a little over my time there, but I, Councilmember, am I answering your question? Kind of looking at comp plan, I think there's a lot of opportunity in the envisioning um where we could tweak that to start considering where we would have those um uses. And then, once we start talking about development standards, yeah, there's definitely some challenges there. I don't want to um understate that or overstate it. Um, solid waste is going to be a major challenge um for commercial uses. Um, the way we do our operations, and I've kind of spoken with my colleagues, it's very challenging in a residential area to do a dumpster pickup. I know it's suggested to do carts, but that would be a major change for how our solid waste is collected commercially. So, there's some definite challenges we would have to work through over time. But if we're looking at the comprehensive plan now, I think we're laying groundwork. And then we would have to do some some real wonky work in the actual municipal code update.
Um, that was, that was perfect. Uh, I'd sort of bring that up because in the communities that didn't uh require extensive parking, you actually saw faster growth of these kinds of things. Because I actually know of two businesses that tried to start uh small businesses along state. Both of them failed, not because they didn't have the loans, but because they couldn't get the parking in our city. So just, just to put that out there, I don't know if in the comp plan you can, how you would address that, but I do think it's an important factor. That if, you know, somebody has everything, all the ducks in a row, and then you get to the parking and they can't put in their ten spots required by our code, um, you've just sunk that project. So, the other one is, as you pointed out, making sure there's uh some kind of uh nod to the transportation master plan and the walkable neighborhoods. So that if there is a priority that is being given to different neighborhoods in this plan as we build our pathways and our sidewalks, that that is a consideration. Um, lastly, I like the idea of these floating neighborhoods because sometimes neighborhood centers organically happen. So are we going to put something in the comp plan that says at a certain point in the future, we do a GIS study to see if we all of a sudden had a a new neighborhood center that is kind of cropping up and should have those considerations? Are we going to be making a a mention of that?
I I think we will be evaluating that because um while there were two centers that were um out outright recommended for removal as a neighborhood center, there were a couple of neighborhood centers that were on the cusp. And part of that had to do with the, um, while there was uh actual zone space, uh, they had critical areas, um, they weren't necessarily connected in any way um to the neighborhood around it through sidewalks or bike connectivity. So if we're looking, I think it's the Eighteenth and Boulevard uh Neighborhood Center, there is uh a business there and there was some consideration of actually removing that as a neighborhood center. Not necessarily in favor of doing that because there is an existing business. We're not trying to make that a non-conforming use. But in order for that neighborhood center to be successful in the future, we absolutely have to look at the actually connecting it to the neighborhood because there are no sidewalks in that particular neighborhood center whatsoever. And then, um, the other issue is that if we're going to have, it's only one business currently. Um, ki- I think that's where our consultants, um, Rachel and Brian would say, that's a prime candidate for what we would call the floating center, where there's probably additional space to the south, um, assuming um you had uh landowners or the the property owners were willing to uh explore those opportunities. But making that available and and making floating centers available might uh might encourage other developments where there is vacant land that's not encumbered by critical areas. So, um, looking at the comp plan and looking at the uh idea of floating centers or um additional small commercial uses in proximity to that, I think is going to be a key aspect of our our um comp plan going forward, um, when we consider neighborhood centers.
Councilmember Gilman.
I am so excited, so pleased with the report and um this project that you're bringing to us today. Casey has had, it's kind of a relay race. There have been multiple folks working on it for many years. Um, and so I I want to both say I'm super excited by so many elements in the strategic plan. And I'm completely opposed to the concept of neighborhood centers. That um, the, what regulations are holding back the development of neighborhood centers that we saw so popular, it's our neighborhood centers, our neighborhood retail zoning being placed retroactively on top of small remaining commercial businesses that were spread through the that were spread through the neighborhoods. At the point that we decided to declare, um, single-family zoning in the nineteen-sixties, we carved these out to allow them to remain. Um, one interesting thing in the report is that you described that San Francisco Bakery could not today even be converted from the old grocery store and then Vietnamese market and then bakery. That sort of transition or adaptive reuse wouldn't happen today. So, that's why I'm, I'm so excited to hear about us thinking, stepping back one step and saying, well, that was a historical vestige of the, the trying to carve out, this is single-family land, this is strip mall land, and this is mall land. And, uh, so, so I, I think it's by, by rethinking how to move this, the neighborhood, uh, retail uses into the residential portion of our code that, that we begin to allow this to happen. I, I don't see new neighborhood clusters happening organically under any form of neighborhood center structure like this because they're not allowed. So, unless somebody could build on top of the Frog Pond to put a second floor, another six thousand square foot business on top. Um, so, for me, we have all this great ideas about how to manage it. We see clear public support that people want to have more small shops in their neighborhood. But I think we have to step away from how do we improve the neighborhood commercial designation? And, and think instead of, how do we genuinely allow these opportunities to develop organically? Um, so, that, it's, it's just a super exciting point, I think, that we're at. And it's, it's perfect that we're coming up on a comp plan update process also, so that there's, there's room to, to move these things. And then, the, the other point I want to make this evening is that a lot of the controversy in the last, the, I don't know, a few years ago round of this was that it felt a little bit like the neighborhood center report that came was a Trojan horse for missing middle sorts of, uh, uh, mixed-use and residential development. And so, I think it makes more sense to focus on the commercial uses and then to have triggers for increasing density, much like we talked about transit corridors, that as there's a cluster of retail, um, that's, that's probably a good place to consider changing the zoning um, to allow mixed-use buildings and whatever other higher density. So, I think that separating those two conversations and, and, and two sets of policies makes a lot of sense to me. And I, and I think frankly that the, the retail is much more broadly popular than the idea of, of, um, multifamily, larger buildings in the single-family neighborhoods. But as we grow into a city, I think that allowing the retail first can help to pave the way for, to make sense for people to have mixed-use buildings on those, in those intersections. So, Casey, keep going. And thank you, Rachel and Brian, for your work on this report. It's super helpful.
Mayor Protime, followed by councilmember Madron.
Um, I have a question for councilmember Gilman. Uh, for the, for the first portion, um, uh, just wanna make sure I'm understanding, uh, what you don't agree with, which is, so I'm hearing that you support neighborhood centers or at least like, you know, business clusters in, in neighborhoods, um, but you're rejecting and you challenge how it's been done historically. Is that what, what it is?
The, the rules that we have today are one of the biggest obstacles to, well, like Swan Town serving coffee. And how that makes sense in the world, I, I don't know. So, I, I think as, as, um, councilmember Madron said, the land use conversation was about, and, and Casey was describing maybe ways to shift this so that instead of trying to figure out the highest use of where there had been a gas station, mini-mart in nineteen fifty-five, that we're thinking, where in town do people wanna start serving coffee? And, and so, so it's about giving up these designations of neighborhood centers or applying a new definition of neighborhood centers that has to do with the kind of street or proximity to transit or, um, but I'm just, I, I'm not sure that this, that these efforts to use architects and planners and master plan where a neighborhood center's gonna go, I, I think it stifles the development of the thing we're trying to create. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Madron, followed by councilme- Councilmember Madron, followed by councilmember Parsley.
Yeah, uh, thanks for that, councilmember Gilman. That was like a lot of the conversation that we had in, uh, in land use. Like, I summed it up in about five minutes, but if you ask Casey, you know, it was actually a very long meeting. But, um, uh, you know, we also, another thing that we did talk about was, um, mixed-use buildings. And so like, you know, if somebody, if, 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 if there was, you know, a vacant or redevelopable spot, like, you know, what if there was a cafe below and four apartments on top, just like Bits Cafe that has the studios up on top and like, you know, maybe the, the, the business below helps make it viable to build, you know, four small units or vice versa, or all of it together. Um, so, we also discussed that possibility in terms of like the multifamily component. Not big multifamily, or, or maybe it is, you know, there's, there's more conversation to be had around that. But, um, yeah, um, I, I wish you could have been there with us at land use to help us bring this over the finish line.
I miss you all.
Councilmember Parsley.
I guess I, I needed to follow up on the questions, I, I, and, uh, councilmember Gilman. Um, I somewhat agree with you on this in that it's obviously failed just to arbitrarily say this neighborhood's gonna be a center. But how would you feel about, we do have a couple that appear to be somewhat successful at the commercial part of it, feel about using these as test cases for changing our zoning for housing in this area? Like around the San Francisco Street Bakery, across the street is some more land that could be, uh, turned into a brew pub or something, or a restaurant. Um, how would you feel about saying, okay, well, these areas are established and they're what we think of as neighborhood centers? So now we should look at the housing zoning as well as upzoning that a little bit so that we can get multifamily in there around what is already an established neighborhood center?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm, um, I'm sorry, my, my concern was not, um, being in opposition to allowing those, those denser building forms, but in the, the last round of this project, the thing that sunk it was that it was a by the, the last line was, and by the way, everything within, uh, a half-mile radius can now build larger buildings. And, um, or, or it was, it was less than a half mile, it was a, a city block in either direction. But it wasn't about that intersection or those shops. It was a, a broader, um, uh, just a, a lot more parcels being involved. So I, I'm not opposed to it, but I want us to do that intentionally as we consider where we're going to do, as we did with transit corridors, um, as we now did on every corner lot in the city, you know? It's, um, just to be intentional about that and not have it, um, slide in, in a conversation about retail businesses.
No, I, I do like that. Um, I also, I do think, um, organically, we might see some centers show up. That's, I think if we allow small commercial, um, in the certain boundaries that were put forward, potentially, you know, some changes to it, we might see some property in our, our neighborhoods that we aren't even paying attention to that would make a small coffee shop, make a small bakery, and then all of a sudden you have it grow from there. That's why I was wondering about the flo- idea of a floating neighborhood center and then reassessing what, what we have going as we start to encourage this kind of growth. So I, I agree with you, councilmember Gilman.
Mayor Protime.
Um, I guess this question would be for you, Casey. What have, uh, what has this city done, um, to your knowledge, uh, to really promote that someone could have their business there? I mean, I jo- jokingly made a little sketch of a sign that says, "Your business here," and slipped it to the mayor. It's like, you know, it's like, how many people actually know that they could have a business there? Especially some of these areas are kind of dialect. Keep going.
So that's a little challenging for me to answer. So, and it, as a planner, we find out that somebody's interested in a parcel essentially when they contact us and say, "Can I do this at, at this available spot?" And generally, if it's a permissible conditional use, we'll kind of walk through the process of what it would take to get there. And if it seems like it's a viable, um, parcel or building, we'll usually take them through a pre-submission conference. And I think, uh, as some of the other councilmembers have pointed out, it's usually in that process where we'll find out there might be barriers either through utility connections, parking, uh, requirements that they can't meet. Um, sometimes it's even our design standards. But in terms of promoting the neighborhood centers themselves, as a planner, I don't think we're necessarily directing people there because we're really relying on people to find the building or parcel where they want to develop and we're just working within our existing code to say whether or not that's a viable location. Um, our economic development, um, I do want to point out, um, I think somebody mentioned the, um, the, the lot that's south of, um, not San Francisco Bakery, but there is the, um, might be Plaid Pantry, I might be getting it wrong here.
Puget Pantry.
Puget Pantry, thank you. Uh, there is a lot south of that that is undeveloped. Our economic development has actually worked with that neighborhood. The Neighborhood Association reached out and worked with, um, Mike Reed to find out what they could do with that. That site was formerly a gas station, so our economic development team actually did facilitate through some grant funding to at least complete the phase-one, um, uh, environmental remediation of that former gas station site. So I believe one of the community members actually spoke at the Land Use and Environment Committee, um, kind of requesting additional assistance in making that vacant lot, uh, a viable use in the future. And I will point out that some of the discussion around that, as a neighborhood retail zoning destination, there, the idea that was floated most prominently was the possibility of food trucks. That poses some challenges because our code is, is a little finicky when it comes to something like a food truck or a food truck corp. Um, it's not well-defined. So again, it's, it's dependent on, on the location and whether or not we have a permissible use available at that site. So neighborhood retail is fairly, um, it's restrictive in the sense that you're looking at very small commercial types. So that's another reason why some of these locations, if they're trying to do a, a new building or invest in a tenant improvement, um, the space that they're allowed to have um, as usable space or customer-serving space can be fairly limited. So it, it just might not be a viable location, um, to invest in there, so.
I appreciate that answer. Um, I, uh, you know, I don't mean to go too in the weeds right now, um, but I, I think, uh, there is something to be said about having that conversation later on. Uh, you know, no matter where we end up, like how are we, how are we sharing this? How are we promoting it? How are we working through our partners, right? Um, at the EDC or the Economic Development Council, at the Chamber, uh, with, you know, with, with entrepreneur nonprofits out there, you know, because it's, I do, uh, you know, a lot of these buildings also, they don't say for lease on it, you know? And so, and so I, I think about that and, uh, though I am supportive of, of going, uh, maybe having both of, of having these fixed areas and then, uh, and then letting things crop up organically. It's, that's also, uh, leaning on, on a lot of like, you gotta, you know, know certain people. You gotta kind of be in and familiar with certain systems and so. And I also know that it's an interest, um, of the councils and, um, informed by the community of, of having certain types of business, you know? And so, we're kind of at a, at a point where we're just hoping that we'd have businesses, much less kind of deciding which types, but like, we'd like to have, yeah, a small grocery store, a cafe for people to connect these like kind of necessity things, a childcare center. That would be so great in these neighborhood centers. And so, if people don't even know they exist and know that's an interest of ours, you know, so anyways. I'll kind of stop talking now, but you get it. It's like, we gotta let people know. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor Protime. That's exactly where I was gonna be headed with my, uh, comments, but I do believe, believe childcare centers require a certain kind of zoning, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, do they not?
They're allowed now.
Okay. Um, city manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on this line of, um, conversation, I want to add, one of the, the, the charts that Brian showed in terms of barriers is, in some of these neighborhood centers, there's not even any available land to promote. So even though the neighborhood center exists, there's not an opportunity there to do anything, so. But I do agree that as we make changes and update the comp plan and update our opportunities for more organic opportunities, we should be shouting that from the mountaintops with our, with our economic development team and through others to make sure people know that those opportunities exist. Uh, so I just wanted to add, both those pe- both those things are true. One, we're struggling with the available area we have, but two, when we make the changes, absolutely, we should be doing that.
Yes. Uh, councilmember Madron.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say it since I said it quietly to you and, but just so, just so the listening public knows that childcare is actually one of the permitted uses as, as an in-home business, uh, with it. And so, that's currently allowed now, um, in, in residential neighborhoods, just so everybody knows.
Thank you. Um, yes, very great discussion. I, um, I would have to say that I agree with the direction that the recommendations are going and with the conversation that we're having about organically allowing neighborhood centers to develop, um, as opposed to granting designations, uh, before they do so. Uh, I think that makes sense. Obviously, we're seeing that, um, as it exists now maybe is not the approach that we should be taking in that regard. Um, I do have a question about, um, the, uh, small commercial, uh, uses and there is also a, um, recommendation for a citywide program about streamlining the process for parklets. So in this discussion about, um, you know, having these small commercial zones, will there be, would there be other criteria for having these parklets? Because I just, I, I see that kind of like, wh- where, where does it stop? Uh, I guess is, is what I'm trying to figure out, how one recommendation, um, goes along with the other.
So, when, when we're talking about the parklets, I, I don't know that that's necessarily something that has to be required. Um, I, I will point out that, um, when we're looking at some of our design review requirements, there are requirements for things like open space, um, that might be comparable to a parklet. When, uh, that is a conversation that's been coming up predominantly at the Olympia Planning Commission, looking at, if we're gonna have these neighborhood retail uses, um, and they want, they want this to be a gathering space for that neighborhood community, um, there was some discussion of, well, we don't want people to have to buy something in order to sit down and enjoy that space. So I think the planning commission has been talking more about something, um, I would say as a, as a civic contribution to this is, um, urban parklets. So where some of these neighborhood retail spaces are, are cropping up, we might try to provide some additional, um, park space. It could be something we require through our municipal code, but it's, it's really kind of, um, a discussion that we can have and it's kind of a direction that I would look, um, to, towards you and to the community to say, are we going to require, um, an urban parklet to be built in conjunction with this? Or is that something that we would try to prioritize as we see where these spots are developing? And maybe that might be something that the city, um, tries to facilitate. Because, um, I'm looking towards our, our consultants here. I want to say that particularly with like the TI improvement programs, I believe that there were some, um, s- uh, open spaces that might have been required as some of those programs as well. Is that correct?
Um, I'm happy to try to answer this. Rachel, jump in. Um, so first of all, um, when we use the word parklet in the report, um, there's a definition way on in the report, but what we meant is public seating in curbside parking spaces. Um, and that could be seating that's open to the general public or seating that's open to, you know, um, those dining at a, at a, at a restaurant. And our understanding was that that was something that was, uh, the- And our understanding was that that was something that was, the parklets were were allowed in greater numbers or the permitting was streamlined during, during COVID, and that that was, that was popular. So we, we wanted to raise that as a, as a way to bring additional business and community interaction opportunities to to these centers and potentially other locations.
Real quickly, I do want to say that the Planning Commission kind of had that as a distinct. So I think what you're describing is like the the streetery program that we had during COVID.
Yeah.
And I think our, our Planning Commission is really focused, they like the idea of increasing streetery opportunities. But they were also, some of our, our planning commissioners were very adamant that we should also be including essentially small parks, maybe through the city parks, maybe through just kind of like commercial courtyard areas where people could gather. So I think there's a little bit of a distinction there. So, sorry, Brian.
No problem. So in terms of, one, I'm not sure if you were getting towards this, but but requiring small business owners or businesses to build parks, I would, I would be worried about that. It, that's an expensive undertaking and, you know, it seems like, you know, building small parks is challenging for anybody, for a city or or a property owner developer business. But certainly putting that responsibility onto a small business owner, I worry that it would have the unintended consequence of deterring small businesses to open.
Okay. So what I hear you saying is, is that, yes, these are two separate recommendations, but I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is that if we were to implement small commercial use, in theory, a parklet could be opened or in any of these small commercial areas. And the idea is that we are expanding our, our, our number of neighborhood centers by doing this, or that's the intent. So I'm, I guess I'm just trying to understand, will there be other criteria for that other than just being a neighborhood center in a small commercial area? Will there be other criteria for having a parklet? Because obviously, the idea is to expand, so that means we would have more. And obviously, that's an impact to neighborhoods. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand that.
It, it could be. And it's, it's all, it all comes down to what we actually put into the municipal code. So if we want to say that, you know, if you're gonna have two commercial spaces or a commercial space, we could have requirements that also include an open space area that is outside of the business as a small parklet. So as I mentioned, there are some design review requirements that have open space requirements. We could do something like that. I would say that that can be a deterrent, especially for a small business, to have to develop something like that. So we could look at options like that, and there's kind of a number of ways we could implement that. So we, you know, if we had a large area and we had a proposal for, say, three small commercial uses to go in, say, a designated area, so we kind of mentioned that that gravel lot that's prime for development. If we looked at something like that and they were saying, all right, we're gonna propose XYZ business, we might say that that triggers an additional open space area. We could do something like that. I'm not saying that we have to. But it all comes down to how we want to, how we want the code to read and what we want included with these small commercial uses. And I do want to also kind of point out that when we're talking about small commercial uses and we're looking at how we write that code, we can have requirements that make sure it meets the scale and look of a neighborhood so that you don't have something that's kind of out of left field. You can have approaches like that. I'm not necessarily saying that we should or have to. But as we look at the actual code, we can write it to, to meet the community's need and what we envision for this in the future. So there's a number of ways that we can approach this. So kind of the first phase is just really looking at the comprehensive plan and determining whether we want to have small commercial uses, either in dedicated neighborhood centers, floating areas in proximity to those designations, or small commercial uses throughout residential. And again, even if it's a more citywide, the code could have requirements that it has to be next to an arterial or it has to be on a corner. I believe the study actually talks about, and actually, I think the, the state bill that failed with restaurants, it was actually, it had location requirements that if you were going to have a restaurant, it had to be on a corner near a certain street, things of that nature. And then our neighborhood centers report also talks about neighborhood centers should have at least 12 hours of transportation access a day. So as we implement our actual code writing or start to write the code, we could have all sorts of requirements in that. It can be as loose or as tight as we think it's necessary to make small commercial uses or neighborhood centers viable. So there's a lot of flexibility once we actually start writing code. The comprehensive plan, really, as we're developing that right now, that's kind of just allowing us to ask the question of, you know, do we want these uses throughout the city? And if we say yes, then we have to look at the code and say, how do we actually make that happen? And that's where we can really make it tighter loose. So.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm just really interested in, I guess, the impact portion of this discussion and really making sure that we don't want to be too prescriptive in in our code, but we certainly want to give it some sufficient thought as to what do all of these changes actually mean for the neighborhoods? And, and to make sure that the neighborhoods are included and engaged in that process as it's occurring. I just kind of want to echo with the Mayor Protem was saying about how do we know, you know, if folks know that they're, they can open businesses in these areas, working with our regional partners to maybe help bring that about, working with, you know, our recognized neighborhood associations, have we surveyed them to know what kinds of businesses they may be or not that they would want to see in their neighborhoods? To, I guess, help other potential business owners, you know, even help them know what kinds of businesses folks are are looking to open. And maybe you can make those connections based off of that information. So, yeah, those are just a few of my thoughts that I have about this, but I really do appreciate where we're going with this in in terms of inspiring an increase of our neighborhood associations and in doing so in a more organic way than than the way we've done in the past. So I appreciate all of you for your work and the presentation this evening. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that takes us to our next business item on the agenda, item six B, which is the approval of the proposed agenda location and facilitator for the mid-year city council retreat. Presenting City Manager Jay Burney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm giving Kelly a moment to pull up my visual here. For the record, Jay Burney, City Manager. So I'm here tonight to gain, gain your approval on a mid-year, proposed mid-year retreat agenda. As Kelly brings this up, just a little bit about process. So immediately after we finished your annual retreat, I set about planning for your mid-year retreat because it comes at us pretty quick. I started talking with many of you in one-on-ones about kind of follow-ons that come out of your annual retreat and how that might lead into a mid-year retreat discussion. And then, as the council is aware, you've developed a process whereby you're using the committee of the chairs to work with me to help develop an agenda. So the committee of chairs met in April to consider an agenda, a location, and a retreat facilitator. So where, tonight's just kind of where we landed with all of that. So in terms of retreat facilitator, you used Amy Leniker at your annual retreat, and she was available to serve at your mid-year, and the committee of chairs unanimously agreed to have Amy back with you at your mid-year retreat. So Amy is your proposed retreat facilitator. In terms of location, so when we left the committee of the chairs, the direction was to, hey, let's get out of council chambers and maybe think about the Squawson Museum. And so that's the direction that we were heading. And unfortunately, the Squawson Museum was not available on June 14th. We thought it was, and we got all excited, and then we found out that it was actually already booked. So we are gonna be here in council chambers. What I heard from a lot of you was, if there's a lot of comfort in being here, it's always great to get out of here, but if we can't, if we can't be somewhere else, most of you prefer to be here in a place of comfort. So that's the recommendation that's here in front of you. The one change for the committee of the chairs is an eight thirty to four thirty. I think I'd proposed an eight to four or eight thirty to four, and that's what we talked about. As I talked to Amy and her ability to fit all this in, she's proposing an eight thirty to four thirty agenda on that day. So, so hopefully, that's okay. In terms of the topics, there's really, the big ones here are, as you remember, at your annual retreat, we're hoping to bring you some updated training around the equity framework, and it wasn't quite ready. And the committee of chairs expressed an interest in in making sure we, we found a home for that on the mid-year if it's ready. It is in fact, ready. The, the idea with that particular agenda item is is twofold. One is, we've done a lot of learning about how we've used the equity tool and how it's worked for staff and and Toby is gonna kind of update you on what we've learned and some modifications to make it more useful and easy to use and make sure we're getting everything out of it. The other thing we hope to do with you is also talk with council about not just how we use it in staff reports, but how does, how can the council use that as a tool for your decision-making? And make it more available to you for the things that you're doing and have that conversation with you as well. So that's what we hope to do out of that piece of training. The other kind of big hitter here is a two-hour discussion. Sorry for the pun, but to have a more comprehensive discussion with the council around the comp plan. So as you know, I've, staff spent some time with all of you, kind of understanding where you're at and kind of your desires around what you want to see out of the comp plan comp plan process, excuse me. And so Joyce Phillips will be there to kind of facilitate a conversation with you about how we take everything we heard from all of you and package that up to make sure we've captured your thoughts in terms of how we finish up our comp plan update, how we bring updates to you, what's that look like, and any other input you have as we, as we continue down the process. So we'll have a pretty robust discussion there. And then in the afternoon, we, we have planned for our work plan update, which we typically do at your mid-year retreat, just a brief update to talk about where we are, any shifts, any changes, any modifications, or any concerns you have about pace of things. So things you'd like to see sped up or things that you're worried might need to slow down, those types of things. We can kind of bend and flex with you around your work plan and talk about progress. And then wind up with a conversation that, that, that leads off of your annual retreat discussion around budget, more specifically around preparations for the 2025 budget. Budget kicks off in June with staff, so it's this perfect timing to have an opportunity to talk with council for me to share some budget direction that I've been developing with staff, so I can check that with all of you and make sure I'm hitting the nail on the head, hear from you upfront about any concerns or things you want, or you're interested in in terms of our conversations around the 2025 budget. And then I also will likely use that, that opportunity while I have you at your mid-year retreat to talk a bit about the budget sustainability work that we're doing on an ongoing basis. So as an update to that. The one thing as I, as you, as I seek your approval of the agenda tonight, is I might ask for a little flexibility in the afternoon. The mayor has, has an event at two thirty up at the Capitol Campus he needs to be at and needs to break away for a little bit. His preference would be to break away, if he had to miss anything, to miss the work plan, but be there for the budget discussion. So based on that, I may need to move things around. So by the time this comes before you that day, that those items might flip flop around. Amy's gonna work that a little bit. But I guess for tonight, I'm looking for your, any questions you have or your approval on Amy Leniker as your facilitator, council chambers as your location, and the agenda items that are in front of you, knowing that they can move around a little bit. And with that, I'll, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you very much, Jay. Any comments on this? Councilmember Gilman.
I, I think that the agenda really reflects the work that we're doing now, and I'm, I'm really excited about that. And it, I, I also think that spending this day, that I would benefit with as much of the E Team as is willing to carve the timeout, to be in the room with us. So I would just both make the invitation, but also say, I think that we'd have a stronger meeting with them present.
Agreed. Any other comments or questions? Mayor Protem Lynn.
Thank you so much. Yeah, this is, it's, you know, it's one sheet of paper, but it's a lot of coordination, you know, and just checking in with everyone, making sure folks are available. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that we don't see. I'm sure we would be told if we asked. But there's a lot of, you know, trying to make all of the parts fit, and this is a packed agenda. You know, it'll be, it'd be a miracle if we just, everything went flawless, honestly. So more than, more than happy to stay till four thirty. I really don't like to do this usually, but it should say four thirty PM.
Oh, yeah. We don't want to be, I don't want you there till four thirty. We'll make that change. Thank you.
Yeah. The, oh, and then just, just want to say thank you to the committee of the chairs for your extra time and and your work on this, too. Yeah, it's, yeah, I, yeah, I hope that, you know, I, I hope that, I think I'm seeing a lot of thumbs up, but I hope that we pass it today. There's a, there's a lot of additional meetings and, and just trying to keep on working it until we, we get an agenda that really reflects the full council's interest. And, and heck, yeah, I want the E Team there. I don't want them to be required to be there, you know, if it, especially if it doesn't hit their area, but they spend a lot of extra time with us. But it's been a real value add to have them there for our annual retreat, so.
Well, thank you. And I know that they're always pleased to be invited by you and welcomed by you. It's a workday. It's a Friday, so most of them will be here. And I think for the comp plan discussion in particular, a lot of them are gonna want to tune in and listen in because a lot of their staff are, are writing those chapters. So I think we'll get some good engagement around that. I know all of them are also very interested in the budget conversations and kind of where all you are and getting a sneak peek of that. So I think you'll get some good engagement from the E Team. So we appreciate and they appreciate the offer.
Councilmember Partial.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to the council or committee of chairs. I also would like to executive, as many who can be there, I agree with the Mayor Protem, it shouldn't be a requirement, but it's also a good temperature check. Because if one of them kind of blanches when we're talking about some new work plan, we know that the staff's overworked and this is probably not a good idea to turn 180 degrees on them. But also about the budget. So I fully support, I would like, as the finance chair, to make sure that if the mayor needs to have things arranged and would like to be there for the budget, I would like to hear his voice. It's important to make sure that we're, we're representing the whole council and finance committees.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Partially. Councilmember Madron.
Just want to say real quick, this is, it's a check-in on the work plan. We're not like, you know, making major changes to it mid-year. Are you ready for a motion?
Not yet. Yeah, that, and that, that was exactly the reason why I said that I wanted to be there for the budget discussion as opposed to the, the work plan conversation. So I appreciate everybody's willingness to be flexible so that I can make it to, just for additional context, it is, the event is the Juneteenth celebration over on Capitol Campus. It's the state celebration. So they invited me to speak as the mayor of the Capitol. So I will be there and then try to get back here as soon as I can. So I appreciate that flexibility. And I appreciate the committee of the chairs, your time spent on crafting the agenda and being very thoughtful about all of the topics we're working on. Especially, I'm really looking forward to our comp plan discussion and our equity framework training, in addition to our budget conversations especially. It is a very packed agenda, and I will be very proud of us if we walk away feeling satisfied with challenging each of these topics. But anyway, thank you, Jay, and very much looking forward to having the exec team join us as well for our discussions. And now I will happy to take a motion.
If my mic will turn on. Hello? Maybe somebody else just decided. Oh, hello? Is it working now? Is it working now? The light's not on, but it's working. Anyways, I move to approve the proposed upcoming midyear retreat details, including location, agenda, and facilitator, knowing that times on the agenda may shift around. Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that takes us to Council Reports. I'll just start very briefly with the mayor's report. Last week, I attended the Thurston County Chambers' Elected Officials Breakfast. And some of you may or may not know, but those conversations at those meetings are, have very much been revolved around maternal health care in a state of maternal mortality in our region, particularly in Thurston County. And we have, we are coming together specifically on this issue because it's one that certainly has a national focus and a state-level focus. But it certainly does not have a, it does not have a, very much of a local focus. And I think the purpose of them bringing this to us is because they would really like us to sort of put our heads together on how we might address this issue locally. And I think some of it is easy, you know, to think about in terms of, well, if we provide better basic services, then that should help it. But that's a large assumption, right? Providing sufficient and safe housing, providing basic public health needs, clean air, clear, clean water, those things. Improving the conditions of our city obviously contributes to that. But very specific actions is, I think, what they're looking for. And one of the things that I was thinking about as it relates to this is our Olympia Strong work and how we're looking at tackling childcare, which is something that is very much outside of the traditional scope of a city. But I am, I'm wondering about thinking about childcare in a broader sense. Obviously, I know that this comes with a pretty hefty price tag, obviously, already, you know, as it exists in Olympia Strong. But in this case, I'm thinking about quantity, quality over quantity and how we might do the most that we can, not to just provide four walls and a roof for a child to be watched for a family, but the ultimate well-being of those children as well. So what happens after, you know, the, the families are, have welcomed a new child into their lives and thinking about it from that perspective as well. And obviously, that will certainly play a part in the overall experience because beyond the maternal mortality rates, we have a very significant portion of school students, young school students who have contemplated suicide in our area. And so the reason I'm saying this is because we have to not just think of childcare in the sense of a physical space, but think about it in the context of the well-being of a whole child holistically. And the sooner the intervention, the better. And if local government can play a part in that, then we certainly should. I also want to just mention briefly, I believe Councilmember Cooper mentioned this last week, but the 108 State Subcommittee met and we heard the proposal from the Artisans Group. And we will be doing the same with the AHA Group as well in the next few weeks. And so we look forward to hearing their proposal as well. And very much looking forward to coming back to Council with where the Subcommittee feels we should be moving next on what to do with that property. So stay tuned. And I will start to, on my left, with Councilmember Partially.
Thank you. I only have two things to report. The Joint Animal Service Commission met and we got a great update on our animal service officers and the training they go through. They actually go through quite a bit of training. Under the auspice of Sarah Hawke, she's actually streamlined and made official our officer training. They are also no longer commissioned officers of the Thurston County Sheriff's Department, which reduced a bunch of requirements for hiring. So now we're actually fully staffed. We have our full six members, which means three at a time on. And then they don't have to call, do serious call, which can get really tiring. They go through animal control officer training that is put on by the National Animal Care Control Association. They also go through a course at the Animal Control Academy through the Washington Criminal Justice Training. It's pretty extensive. They reminded us that if there is a felony or gross misdemeanor situation for animal abuse, they work through the local jurisdiction. So if it happens in Olympia, the OPD is the officer that presents the warrant, not them, but they are there in the case of an animal needing to be wrangled or cared for. They're there for emergency response. They're usually there within thirty to sixty minutes, as long as, twenty-four hours a day, as long as they have enough time to get there. The other thing that they wanted to point out is that they're taking field volunteers who can come help during big hoarding cases. For example, when we had a hundred and forty cats, our six officers cannot do all that. So anyone that's willing to go get trained on this, they will be put through a pretty extensive course on this. And one of our new Joint Animal Service Commission members is actually a forensic veterinarian, which I did not know until I met Vicky what that is. That's actually, you go through a DVM and a master's in criminal investigation. So she's actually a national expert on it and we have her in Olympia. And she's offering to train all our emergency vets around here because if you take in an animal, you can soil the chain of evidence if you're not aware of what's going on. And you don't treat the animal correctly and take photographs, the correct photographs. So it's, it's a pretty fascinating process. And then we got a confirmation about our space needs are indeed inadequate. We had the architects that are specialized in animal shelters tell us we need twenty-five thousand square feet. We have eight thousand square feet to do this correctly. And that our lot will not work for flow of essentially a shelter and hospital. It would put not only the animals, but the staff in danger at points. So we are beginning a very serious look. Once again, we asked all the members of our Joint Animal Service Commission to go back to their jurisdictions and see if there's any property out there. Finance met just last night. It was a great meeting. We had our long-term budget stability presentation by our city manager. He kind of gave us where we are in the process. I'm going to do it very briefly because he's going to do it at retreat. We are in our planning process as well as Phase One. We will be doing a polling in early June. The Embold will also be taking individuals that are more interested in getting a deeper dive in some of the questions in July. Our budget process, to remind everybody, starts at the beginning of June and the retreat will be part of that process. And I'll leave that, the rest for Jay. We also went over cost allocations, which are the hidden costs of doing business. The cost of leasing space in the City Hall, the cost of H.R., the cost of I.T., the cost of driving around a city vehicle. What was interesting to me was to realize that the, if you look at the pie chart, I.T. by far is the most, the biggest portion of the pie chart that almost every department uses. And next to that is actually finance and then other, and finally, H.R. A lot of people think H.R. is the biggest indirect cost when it's actually I.T. and then finance, which makes some sense. The indirect, or the direct costs are more like leasing of the space and our vehicles. And all of these leases are intended to be able to provide financing for maintenance in the building, replacement costs of the cars when we get there. So we're putting that money away and not at the year-end funds or funds above policy going, well, we need to buy five new cars for public works, so we just got to take that out of year-end. What we're doing is we're building up the cost to be able to buy those cars without having to come back to the budget and do that. It was a great conversation, but I'm a finance nerd and that was finance. And you guys will hear more about the other stuff at the retreat. Oh, one more thing. Just an update, Workman Comp is not going to be started in July. It will be started, Elle and I, in October, just due to finances and getting it done with everything else going.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Partially? Mayor Protim Win.
Yeah, just a couple of things I want to keep folks abreast of. This is a good time as I need to share with all of you. So last month, or a little over last month, I heard about this book talk that was happening. And it was around a book, I might have shared this with you, but it's called, the book's called Free Boy. And it's a, it's just a really short read, an interesting one too, about a young pre-teen boy that was enslaved. So it's, it's really a tragic story. And he's brought to Olympia in the eighteen fifty's, eighteen sixty's. And then he ends up being, I think in a lot of ways, saved by a few people and the local black community members at that time in Olympia and, and helped him escape through the Puget Sound and then ultimately go to Victoria, Canada, where he was, where he was given his freedom. So anyway, so that book talk invitation was, was learning for me. And then I sort of stayed connected with some of the organizers from there. And then this, then I got an email recently about what could be an interesting opportunity. And it is a request to have recognition on, of Percival Landing be nominated for a part on the, what's called the National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom. It's operated by the National Park Service. The Network to Freedom is a non-regulatory program that includes seven hundred and forty locations nationwide with a variable connection to the Underground Railroad. Through its mission, the Network to Freedom helps to advance the idea that all human beings embrace the right to self-determination and freedom from oppression. So it's something that would be no cost to us and not a lot of additional work. I think just, most importantly, to look into it, you know, we always need to make sure we do our research about things. And then we would need to tell this organization yea or nay, basically give them permission since it's our land. So it's just something interesting that we're looking, we're looking into. They would need, they would need some confirmation by mid-June. So it's something that I've talked to the city manager about and the mayor and sharing with all of you. So we're still looking into it. It's just sometimes, you know, if it is something we go forward with, I don't want you to find out and be like, well, how did that come about? So sometimes it happens. Again, I think also really important to note is that if it is, it is something that we go through with it, it's important to present it in the right way and not sort of glorify it in any way. It's not a cool thing that we had an enslaved person here, enslaved people here. So just something, something to be mindful of and we're certainly being mindful of that. In other heritage news, the Heritage Commission is not doing well. You all might have heard me expressing some concerns about this in the past months. We're just seeing a lot of vacancies and members, you know, leaving, not, not on a good note. And that's not how we want people to leave their, their volunteer service with the City of Olympia. So I know it's something that we're working on. There's some transition with the staff liaison and then also the chair of that commission. And, and we did, the Community of Livability and Public Safety Committee did just do a whole round of appointments to that commission. And so we, we continue to work. It's just us, something that I'll continue voicing some concerns on. Tomorrow night, I will be leaving, taking a brief pause from our committee meeting and walking upstairs and just spending a little bit of time with the Heritage Commission. I think it's just really important to acknowledge when things aren't going well and, and to whatever extent possible, hear folks out. And, and then also share, like, what's the plan for getting on the right track? So I could probably spend the whole night talking about this one. But so that'll be happening tomorrow. Look forward to, to reporting back with you all. And also, like, what a, what a good, you know, not that we necessarily need it, but what a good kind of kick in the butt to like, get us started on this evaluating the health of our advisory groups, right? That's something that I'm certainly really excited about. And I think staff are too, because it is, it is quite a lot of work. And then also, last week, we had one of our public commenters, Javon Bird, which you all are very familiar with, we partner quite a bit with Javon, asked or introduced the idea of forming a sister city connection with Nigeria and shared what sounds like quite an adventure that he had over in Nigeria. I mean, there was a king involved, I mean, and, I mean, it was like, yeah, and, and chiefhood. And it was, it sounds like, it sounds like a really memorable time there. So Javon has since reached out and myself and city manager Bernie are going to be scheduling a meeting with him, just wanting to respect the partnership that we currently have. And then also hear out, you know, what are, what are the goals behind trying to form this connection? And knowing that we as a city are already trying to strengthen the relationship we currently have with Kato, Japan and, and just our sister city process overall. You know, we, we'd hate to be sister cities and name only and not making sure that really is a benefit to the, the city and the community. So that's happening, just FYI.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Any questions or comments for Mayor Protim Win? All right. Well, I will just add that I think Rebecca Howard Park sounds like a great place for the story of the free boy to live. I, I, that's a space that I sort of envisioned, not as necessarily a space for all of the bad things that have happened to us, but it's a good ending to, to a story, to his story that I think could go well, leading into all of the other pioneers in our region. So thanks for sharing that. Mayor Protim.
Thank you. In the book, Rebecca Howard is not sort of like a starring role in the book, but Rebecca Howard is in there. And so this happened along that same time and you learn just, just a titch about some of the other black community members. And it, it's also just, what a shame that their history is not written down, you know, and not memorialized better because there, there's sure a lot of details about everyone else. So yeah, it's, it's an interesting read.
Thank you. And thank you for raising the concern on the Heritage Commission to us all. It's certainly of importance to me and a priority for me as well. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Councilmember Partially.
Can I just ask, if somebody wanted to get the book, where would you get it?
Oh, well, definitely at one of our local bookstores. Browsers actually was, I mean, you could probably find it at their local bookstores. If they don't have it, then they're really good about saying that they can order it and have it there for you. But, but Browsers, when the book talk was coming in, Browsers got a whole bunch of them. And I think those are signed copies too, so that's always a plus. But when I first heard about it, I was like, hey, I don't know if this is a book I want to keep or not. So I got my first copy through the local library and then I ended up wanting to keep it. So we have a few options.
Councilmember Gilman.
Right. Well, in terms of
Well, in terms of activity, had an intercity transit meeting last week and also met with the neighborhood, some folks from the neighborhood, just on Patterson Street, just up above the VFW in Unity Commons. And then also had some conversation with Interfaith Works and Low Income Housing Institute. And I'm glad that the city staff and Olympia Police Department are having conversations. And I think we'll get to a community meeting there. And in the meantime, we're making some little adjustments to try to ease some of the immediate friction on the street. So I think that's a good thing. And I, I, I was struck by one of the slides that Casey showed us this evening, and that was when he was describing Frog Pond was in this tiny little zoning, and then there was the professional office where there's a really good gluten-free bakery across the street he was referring to. But all of the rest of the neighborhood is, is single-family. And it made me think that now that we're in the comp plan process, looking again at the houses that are in proximity to the Capitol campus that are lobbying headquarters and are, several are corporate or large organization-owned, that I, I think we should consider whether that's home occupation use, whether that needs to be formally designated as some sort of commercial use. But, but I think that there's an, an opportunity with the comp plan update to open that back up. A couple of years ago, we had some conversation about that, that topic.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? Councilmember Madron.
See if my mic works. It does, okay. Well, last week, I went on a really fun trip to Washington DC along with friends at the Squawson Island Tribe, Ray Peters, and Department of Enterprise Services, Ann Larson, who's leading on the Deschutes Estuary Restoration Project. And we did some advocacy for federal funding to advance restoring the Deschutes Estuary. We visited staff at the office of Senator Murray. They advised us to check in with FEMA early in the process and just make sure that as this project is moving along, FEMA is aware of what we're doing and, you know, can be responsive to our needs. We met with staff, the senior advisor at Senator Cantwell's office, and she said, oh, yes, this is a really popular project, which just made me smile so big. We also went to the Pentagon, and we met with Mike Connor, who's the Assistant Secretary for the Army for Civil Works, along with Jamie Pinkham, who's the Principal Deputy Assistant Secretary there. And they called this a dream project and advised us on some ways to, to navigate some of the federal permitting that the project will need to undergo. We also met with Congresswoman Strickland's office, and we also met with Derek Kilmer himself. He had just flown in from the Middle East, spent the day taking meetings with people, and then like went to the floor that night. That man is a workhorse, and, you know, bless him on that. It's his, it's his last few months in office here, so really appreciated him giving us his time. But it was really great. It was very positive all around, and it's just really exciting to see this project just bubbling up at the federal level and brainstorming with our representatives there on how, how to get this project across the finish line. As an aside, I randomly ran into our Director of Transportation in front of the Capitol Building because she was there visiting family. It was very strange. Speaking of the Deschutes Estuary, because Jim's not here tonight, I can report out on the Funding and Governance Work Group meeting that happened yesterday. The Department of Enterprise Services and their, their consultant team are doing a really great job, being responsive to the feedback that they're hearing to help us turn what is now an MOU into an ILA among all the jurisdictions. There is concern from folks in terms of the cost-sharing on, you know, just, you know, trying to put as many safeguards into place as possible so that, you know, as the state is putting aside their share of the funding, that it can't be swept by the legislature. And, you know, there's limits to what, you know, what can be done there. But I think at the end of the day, if the state can show us that they can bring over two-hundred million dollars together for a restoration project, that is really important, both for the state and the tribe and the local communities here, then we can trust them to carry out their ongoing obligations around the sediment management that they'll be sharing with us. So I think that's moving forward well. And then the Land Use and Environment Committee met on the ninth. I wrote my notes down in the wrong notebook for that, so I've got a, got them right here. We had a really interesting topic on, sorry, cellphone equipment on water towers, which is like just such a strange, little fascinating topic. We don't have a standardized way of doing those leases. So I'm talking about T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Verizon, but also T-COM and Olympia Amateur Radio, which is a, you know, like a ham radio club. And so the challenges are that we've got no standardized process for the leases. There's, it, it's difficult to manage. Anytime a change is needed, it takes a lot of staff time. So staff have been working with consultants to like establish like a standardized process for that, both increase and standardize the leases and, and just figure out a path forward so that it's not so difficult for our staff to manage, and our staff can, we can also get compensation for their time in managing it. And the Olympia Amateur Radio Club, we're, we're working with them so they don't have, you know, they, they can have their nice cheap lease in exchange for us being able to lean on them in times of emergency when ham radios are all we have. And then finally, the Capitol Mall Triangle Subarea Plan came to the Land Use and Environment Committee, and we did make a couple of changes to it, but didn't recommend that it go on to the full council for a study session, which is happening, I believe, next month. But David Ginther brought us through the very, very lengthy amount of community engagement that he has done on this plan, stakeholder engagement, and walked us through different elements of it as it pertains to land use and transportation and affordable housing and economic development. And, you know, as, as you can imagine, there was robust conversation on the Land Use Committee. I won't get into the details now because the, the hour is getting late and there's lots of details. But I would recommend that, you know, when this does come before us, you know, make sure to give yourself plenty of time to, to, to read through the plan that we, that will be in front of us to approve because that's the future of the Capitol Mall Triangle there. And there's, there's a lot of stuff that we can get done there, and it's, it's really exciting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Councilmember Madron, for the record, what is ham radio? For the record, I'm not really sure. Amazing.
Anybody over there now?
I'm not going to venture. I, I'll, I'll just say it's a, I believe, and I'm not a ham radio expert by any means, it's a more analog network that's more readily available in times of emergency. So a lot of our kind of digital, more modern radio technologies, when power goes out and there's emergencies, they're not readily available. So ha, having a robust ham radio that's really an amateur-led program in most communities is very important for emergency response because in times of emergency, they may be the ones that can communicate around, around for us. So that's the best I can do at the moment.
Thank you.
Wikipedia says he's right.
Yeah, no, that's like, that is much more than I thought it was, you know, especially given the amateur and, and the name. I just thought it was a couple of funny people getting together, hamming it up. That's, that's lovely, emergency response. Who would have thought?
It's also a hobby. It's like, you know, people do it for fun, and then when there's nothing else there, it's, it's also there for times of emergency. So, yeah.
Thank you. Lyra.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, Councilmember Madron, for going over to DC and representing us so well on behalf of the city in support of the Deschutes Estuary. And hopefully you gave them our letter. Great. And also, I, I hope, sounds like things are going well for the work group, but I just hope that as we are working on the development of the inter-local agreement, I hope the other jurisdictions are sounding just as positive about that as you sounded on our behalf. So the earlier we know that, the better, so that we can make sure that this is very successful in the end.
Well, I can add one thing to that. There is one final meeting of this work group that's happening in July. It's going to be in-person. They're giving it extra time to just, just make sure that we are all coming in from a very positive place and feeling good about it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Partially.
Something I wondered about when I served on that committee is how are we lining up our master plans, like the ports and ours for our parks along that way to the restoration? And is the ILA going to mention that? Because I, I know there's a really robust process going right now with the port that seems to be going on somewhat in isolation from some of the other work going on. So in other words, I don't want that sidewalk to nowhere. If the port develops their portion of the peninsula and it doesn't connect to our parks and our restoration, is there any conversation about how our personal jurisdictional lands are going to line up with the restoration?
I think that might be a little bit beyond the scope of the ILA itself, but I will say that Ann Larson at DES, who is really just such a champion for this project, is sitting down with everybody she can. I mean, she has sat down with Paul Simmons and Jay Burney, and like she is sitting down with people at the port and making sure that we are crossing all Ts, dotting all Is. You don't want to put too much into an inter-local agreement, just like, you know, the bare, you know, you know, what, what it is, what we're agreeing to do when it comes to the restoration and the ongoing sediment management. As soon as you start attaching external plans to it, like what happens when those plans change? Do we need to change the whole ILA now? So like, you know, the, all, all the conversations are happening. Were you speaking about the Bud Inlet cleanup? Is that what you're talking about?
That and, and I think the ports project is, what is it called? The Future of the Peninsula or something port?
The 2050 Vision?
Twenty fifty.
Oh.
And they're actually in the Port Advisory Committee right now, looking at what does this look like? Where the, what parts of the port property are they actually going to develop into other processes, like a small boat center, their parks on the end? Where are they going to put their, they've got an administration building they're going to put in? So they're doing a full planning, a master planning for the peninsula going on right now. That's why I'm asking. I, I assume, you know, the parks are going to be pretty amenable to working with DES and the restoration. I just want to make sure that there's a sop to that, at least, that we should be cognizant of a total restoration that should look continuous, that's all.
Oh, absolutely. Like I said, Ann Larson is having all of those conversations right now. The, the big port project that really ties into this is the cleanup of Bud Inlet and the sequencing that needs to happen, like, you know, we, Bud Inlet needs to be cleaned up before we can take the dam out, right? But we still want to be at the, like, right when they're done, we want to be ready for that dam to come out. So there's a lot of, a lot of timing that is really important in this. And like two really big project, actually, in the Funding and Governance Work Group, you know, we talked about, like, you know, if there was some kind of umbrella term for all of the things that we are doing that is going to restore the waterway right there, you know, what is our communication strategy so that as we're all going for funding, we're doing it together and it's all under the same banner? So that's some conversation that, that, that was had just at the meeting yesterday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Madron. And all the more reason to look forward to what I hope will be a joint meeting between the council and the port in the near future. I know that we need to do that. It's been a while, and so, and they have a new director, so we're giving her some time to get things moving, and hopefully we can meet with them soon. So, City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Yeah, in fact, I, I just had breakfast with Alex Smith a couple of weeks ago. We have another one, another meeting coming up, she and I, I think, next week. And we're starting to have those conversations about what's the right timing for a joint meeting. She asked, obviously, for some time, and we were thinking probably fall might be the best time for them to be ready for us. So I'll give you an update as, as we move forward, probably after I meet with Alex next. And then in terms of my updates, just a, just a quick one, you'll notice a new familiar face sitting at the staff table tonight. As you know, Debbie Sullivan, our Assistant City Manager, is off on a, a much deserved sabbatical, and we, we wish her just nothing but fun times on her sabbatical. And in her stead, Stacy Ray is sitting in as the Acting Assistant City Manager. So for the next five weeks, Stacy will be joining us here and helping to oversee that line of business for us. So just want to welcome Stacy to the staff table for the next five weeks.
Thanks, Jay. Any questions or comments for the city manager? All right. Well, welcome, new familiar face. All right. So with that, we are going to recess for five minutes, after which we will reconvene for a closed session related to labor negotiations. No decisions will be made. The meeting is expected to last no longer than sixty minutes in room 423, after which we will be adjourned for the, for the evening, and it is now eight twenty-five.